Good morning, everyone. I'm Kate Stewart and I am the president of the Montgomery County Council. Thank you for joining us today. I do have the distinct pleasure of being the first woman on the Majority Women Council to be president. And I am so glad to be joined by my colleagues who will speak in a moment. On Zoom, we do have our colleagues, Councilmember Lukey and Mink, because as we know, as women, we have, we do a lot in our lives. And sometimes that means not being able to be present for certain things, but they are present on Zoom and we are so glad they are with us. So I just want to give a few remarks before turning over to my colleagues. To one, just say thank you to all the amazing women who are in this room. We have school board members. We have representatives from Congressman Raskin's office. We have so many department heads in our county government led by women. And I just think that is just so incredible. Thank you so much. We have, oh, and we have from Senator Van Hollen's office. Good to see you. And we have representatives from the chamber and our business community. We just enjoyed a wonderful breakfast from Lemon Slice, a business-owned woman, a business, woman-owned business in downtown Silver Spring. And we just want to thank everyone for coming today because here in Montgomery County, we still celebrate days like today. We still celebrate Women's History Month. And we know there are so many challenges, as there have been over the years. We know there's still a long way to go on pay equity, making sure women are represented at all levels of industry and government. And we also know that for all women, we celebrate International Women's Day, but particularly for women of color and trans women, they're seeing even more difficulties now as we're seeing all the chaos, cruelty coming out of the White House. And so here in Montgomery County, we come together on days like today because we know that as women across different segments of our community, that the way we strive, we advance, is coming together and supporting each other. And so days like today are really important to celebrate. This year's theme is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. And I'm going to ask Dr. Anne Kademian from the University of Shady Grove, and I think a number of her students are here to join us as I let my colleagues say a few words and then we'll hear from Dr. Kademian. Let's start over here.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Natalie Fanny, there you go, there you go. My name is Natalie Fanny Gonzalez. I'm a council member. I'm just going to say, yesterday, the three of us, plus a couple guys, were at the, I chaired the Economic Development Committee for the County Council, and we had a session that was very eye-opening. We basically, we had, one of the items that we had on the agenda was discussing the economic indicators from Montgomery County. And it was shocking to see the data. We are losing young professionals, especially women. And there are two top reasons for that. One, the lack of affordable and high-quality childcare. We need childcare to work, okay, as women. So that's one. And two, the high price of housing in the county. On that last point, we have a public hearing today. Stay tuned. I felt I had to say that. There you go. Next.
Hi, everyone. Marilyn Balcom, I am the council member for District Two, and I'm so glad to see everyone. When I walked into the breakfast this morning, it was just so wonderful to see so many highly intelligent, high, the energy in the room and the networking in the room. And as Council President said this morning, we all got here with help from our friends and help from the community. And I can look around the room and see so many women who have personally helped my journey and helped me become the person that I am today. So I thank you all so very, very much. And when we celebrate Women's History Month, there's so much that we have to be proud of in our history. But the one thing that we sometimes forget is no one in this room or in the world would be here without women. So I just want to, I want to congratulate everybody here for all the great, great work that you've done. So thank you.
That's a mic drop moment. I'm Councilmember Lori Anne Sales, an at-large council member, and it's an honor to represent this county. As you've heard and as we've witnessed, it was a bright light coming into the room this morning. Because I've been asking everyone, how's your year going? How's your year going? And what's happening? All the work that we've done over the years. I love this theme this year. Together to get through all of this chaos and havoc and ugliness is going to take us moving forward together, especially having young ladies of the next generation. Because if the woman who didn't fight for us to ensure that, you know, we had the right to vote, reproductive health, the things that we have fought for, our trailblazing women have fought for, we're now picking up the mantle, unfortunately. It's a repetition that we don't want to see. But I'm honored to work with these women and be able to ensure that we continue that work so we don't have to have the same things happening to the next generation. And so Happy Women's History Month. Thank you for what you're doing to inspire the next generation. And please check out our event on the 28th of March to join us at our Women's History Month Breakfast. Come on, it's convenient.
All right, now we're going to ask Dr. Kademian to come up. I'll introduce you first. As I said, this theme this year is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. And when we thought, when we heard the theme was this year and thought, gee, who should we invite to receive the proclamation and speak? It was obvious. It was, took us literally seconds to think of you, Anne. Because of the work that you're doing here in Montgomery County as the Executive Director of the University of Shady Grove, you really lead by example and inspiring others. And I just am so glad that you're able to come today to bring some of the University of Shady Grove students. And just thank you so much, and we'll have you speak.
It's such a pleasure to be here. Before I start, I want, I want to take a minute to have each of the students introduce themselves and just say a little bit about themselves. Brianna, you want to go first?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brianna Guevar Benitez, and I'm a Business Management student at the Smith School of Business, graduating this May. It's a privilege to be here today surrounded by such inspiring leaders. At the University of Shady Grove, I serve as a Student Admin Assistant in the Office of Dr. Anne Kademian, where I assist in coordinating tasks for key leadership initiatives. In this role, I've gained valuable experience in time management, problem-solving, and supporting strategic decisions that contribute to the growth and success of our academic community. Alongside Anne, I am a co-coordinator for the National Academy of Public Administration 2025 Social Equity and Leadership Conference. I've had the opportunity to collaborate with a team of dedicated individuals to start planning a conference that aims to highlight the importance of leadership and equity in public service. This role has sharpened my ability to lead initiatives and manage projects with a focus on impact and community engagement. Additionally, I'm an Oral Communication Fellow at the University of Maryland, where I work closely with business students to help them enhance their public speaking and communication skills. In addition to my academic and leadership roles, I am also a substitute teacher for Montgomery County Public Schools. In this profession, I have the opportunity to contribute to the educational development of students, where I am privileged to contribute to the development of young minds and help them create an engaging and supporting learning environment. Finally, a leadership role that holds great personal significance to me is being the eldest of five younger siblings. This role has taught me the importance of responsibility, empathy, and guidance as I strive to be a positive role model for them. Thank you.
It's hard to follow up. Hello, my name is Mariama Cham. I'm also a student at the University of Shady Grove. I study Information Science at the University of Maryland College Park. First, I would just like to say that I am extremely grateful to be in a room with such outstanding women. It's truly an inspiration, and Montgomery County has provided me and my family so many opportunities, whether that's been in public school, allowing me to be a dual enrollment student and graduate my associate's degree in high school, or whether that be opening opportunities for my parents who immigrated here in the 90s with very little but came out with so much. And so I would just like to say thank you for all of the initiatives that you guys push to create a better space for me and other women like me and other women of color and just everybody. So thank you so much for all the work that you guys do. And a little bit about myself. So yes, I also work in the Executive Director's Office alongside Anne. It's one of the greatest opportunities that I've ever had in my life to work with such an inspiring woman like Anne and build conversations around social equity and leadership and trying to facilitate conversations to bring students to the forefront of those problems has been one of the most enriching opportunities that I've had. I also work with a lot of the other women in the office. I work with Mary Lang and Rose Jackson Spears. I also work with Cheryl Green, the data team that has taught me so much and allowed me to give me a space to use my data skills that I'm learning in the great Information Science major to facilitate conversations on how can we build opportunities for students who graduate from USG from all of our beautiful institutions in Maryland, and how we can create a pathway for them so that when they graduate, they're able to get a job or have any opportunity that they're willing to have. So it's a great opportunity. Thank you so much. I also work for, I also work with Anne on the Social Equity Leadership Conference. I love that conference. I love the idea of the conference. I love the conversation that it's bringing, especially in this time. I think it's really important to especially have a student voice. So it's amazing working with Brianna because she's also incredible and smart, and she brings a lot to the conversation as well. And another hat that I wear at USG is also being a Communication Fellow. So I help the Information Science students, my fellow students, and I help them facilitate conversations within their groups for their classes, you know, providing them with some skills as best as I can to not only perform well in their assignments and for their professors, but gain skills that can actually help them outside of school when they're getting a job or doing interviews and just helping to facilitate and take what I've learned in these amazing spaces and give it all to the students that I also work with. So that has been another amazing opportunity that I've had at USG. And outside of USG, I also work heavily with my high school, Northwood High School. I was, yes. I work with Northwood High School. I work with my dual enrollment mentor, and we help students a lot with, a lot of our dual enrollment students who are kind of already getting that early start with education and making education affordable, which is something that, that has been a conversation in Montgomery County for a while. And I think that dual enrollment has been one of the best opportunities for students to make that kind of, to make education more accessible because that is one of the keys to success. And so I work with him and talking to the students and providing ways to like show that, oh, here's a traditional route. You can go to university, you have your associate's degree, but what can you do with your associate's degree? What are the non-traditional paths, like trade school? Something that we can broaden students' horizons and find places that they can go and be successful. So I enjoy Montgomery County. I love Montgomery County. I love the work that you guys are doing. It's an incredible opportunity to be here, and I just want to say thank you so much.
My name is Lulu Ashamalak. I'm an Information Science student at University of Shady Grove. I graduated with an associate's degree from Montgomery College in Data Science, and I'm also minoring in Technology Innovation Leadership. So it's a wonderful day today, and it's, I'm so glad to be here. It's a pleasure to be here among all these wonderful women here today. And as I stand here as a Muslim wearing a hijab, I am reminded that leadership isn't just about authenticity, but it's also about authenticity and growth and identity. So talking about authenticity, there's nothing like the authenticity in the story a data scientist tells from just numbers and words. So in my internship at the FDA, I was working on a capstone project where I had to analyze the collaboration between the division of the FDA and whether collaboration was a factor or if it was significant in enhancing publications and the amount of publications that are published in their portal. So let me just say, that was definitely an incredible story to tell there. Currently, I also work at USG as part of the Data Analytics Team, and I am involved in the Ready Initiative, which is a project to enhance educational pathways and career readiness for students. And in this role, I work in data visualization, creating dashboards and survey work, data analysis for anything that the department requires. And also, I get to work with wonderful, wonderful people in this department, many of whom are women, who inspire me every day like Dr. Anne herself. And she has been a true role model and inspiration throughout the entire process. Reflecting on Women's History Month, I also realized that as an Information Science student, I noticed that every single woman is a program manager in her family. If multitasking was an Olympic sport, a woman would definitely take home the gold. It's a role that requires multitasking, a whole lot of grace, and only woman would be able to do it, for sure. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak here today, and I'm glad to be a part of such esteemed company, and it's a privilege to be here today.
All right, well, I don't know that I need to say anything else. These are remarkable, remarkable young women who inspire me every day. You heard reference to the Social Equity Leadership Conference. We are hosting that at the University of Shady Grove this year. It's part of the National Academy of Public Administration's annual conference, and we would love to see you all there. If you're interested in speaking or being part of it, please let me know. We've got a great team helping us put it together, so. Well, I want to say it is an honor to be here with all of you at this, on this auspicious occasion of Women's History Month. And I love the theme, Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. Thank you so much, President Stewart, for inviting me and all of you for your leadership here in the county, all the women on the council, all the council members. I look out at this room and, you know, I know so many of you and work with so many of you and love so many of you and enjoy our friendships and the work we do together. So, you know, let's keep collaborating and moving forward. I wanted to share a few thoughts about education because I believe that we can do so much more in this county with education. And, you know, not only inspire and motivate young women and all students, but really do it at scale, like in a big way, right? So I just want to share a few thoughts with you and get you thinking about this. Shady Grove is a campus in the university system of Maryland. It's very unique. We have nine universities on one campus, right? And students follow a pathway in Montgomery County to get there. They go to Montgomery County Public Schools. They go to Montgomery College, our tremendous partners. Sometimes they come from Frederick Community College, sometimes from Howard or from Prince George's Community College, and they transfer into programs at Shady Grove, right? And it's, it's all about access. It's about affordability. It's about an ROI of a job when you graduate as well. It's about students staying in the county as well. We want students to graduate, 85% of the students who graduate from programs at the University of Shady Grove stay in the region, right? So yeah, we don't want to lose any of this talent here. We want all this talent to stay. But I think, you know, we, we work with educational partners in a really creative and imaginative way, and I think there is the potential here to do some really creative things together. What makes our campus, and indeed our county, unique is the potential not only for educational opportunity, but for educational transformation. A transformation that begins by centering the student experience in all that we do so that we not only inspire young women to learn and grow, but we transform the opportunities for generations of young women to lead with their individual strengths, with their passions and interests, and to lead with their values. And you heard this unique set of strengths, interests, and values here today. Surely, we are all dedicated to student opportunity and success, absolutely. Yet, our longstanding methods and models tend to prioritize our institutions over students. You may all remember the concept of a shopping mall with big, with big parking lots, wayfinding signs that list seemingly hundreds of stores with X's that say you are here. And for a pair of socks or a new blender, you will need to wander and roam through the Gap, through Annie's Pretzels, up and down escalators, and through Macy's. And whether you find what you came for or not, as you find your way to your car and maybe use your car alarm to find where you parked, right? You've had an institutional shopping experience, right? Or today, you can go online, you can find exactly what you want, and the purchase comes to your door. Now, education is a more complicated enterprise than shopping. I recognize that. But today, in higher education, we are making students go to the mall, right? We may give them a card for meals, a bus pass to travel back and forth, and a special discount for their shopping, but they must still navigate the institution. Why can't we simply build a more coherent, smoother pathway that supports the unique journey of each student, access to the resources they need, and the realization of their individual strengths, interests, and values through credentials, degrees, work experience, and careers as lifelong learners? So how do we build this transformational educational experience? One of my favorite authors and speakers is a professor named Angus Fletcher. He's a professor of Story Sciences at Ohio State University. In his quest to help all of us access and utilize the creative potential of our minds, he focuses on the idea of exceptional information. This is not information that is the best or information that is most true, but rather information that is the exception to a rule. The information that takes perspective and reflection to notice, and the information that can be transformative if we build on our creativity to make the exception a reality. Each of these young women here today, indeed every woman in this room, everyone in this room, we are writing our story. A story built on exceptional information, unique intellectual, physical, and emotional strengths, building on our interests, pursuit of what motivates and drives us to solve problems, to create vision, to bring resources to bear on the interests that inspire us, and to build on our values, the guiding principles that inform our daily lives, give clarity to difficult decisions, and shape the cultures that we all build among our friends, our family, organizations, and communities. It is, I believe, the full realization of an individual's strengths, interests, and values that makes an outstanding leader and inspires generations. Not a GPA, not the number of honors classes you have taken, not the speed with which you complete four years of college, and not the four-year campus that you attend. Leadership is found where individuals can build and live their story, their exceptional information. We need to support every student's journey and make that exceptional journey the rule. Our county needs every one of you to make this transformation possible, to be the employers, the policymakers, the teachers, the nonprofit leaders who mentor, who provide experiential learning opportunities, who share insights on skills and talent needs, who provide scholarships, who network with the students like crazy this morning. It was awesome to see the students meeting so many of you, and who hire outstanding students along the way who stay in the county and thrive. Before I close, I want to thank the women who have made today and every day in our modern lives possible. The women who ran for county offices, right, for the first, second, and third time. The women who built libraries out of trailers for elementary schools, like my mom in Olivet, Michigan. The women who built their own businesses. The women who teach, who heal, who build, and discover, and support. To all of you here, thank you for showing up, for sharing, for connecting, and making the connections that will last far beyond today. Let's not only educate and inspire, let's work together to transform educational opportunities in Montgomery County and Maryland so that every woman, every student, has the resources, the support, the educational pathways, and the confidence needed to succeed to be exceptional. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Anne, for those inspiring words. I think we all know what we need to do. So usually when we do proclamations, we invite you all up here, but I had a feeling that Anne and the students were going to have some remarkable words to speak for you, so that's why I had you all sitting in the audience so you could hear it. And now I'm going to ask, as I asked my colleagues to come down from the dais so we could read the proclamation, if everyone who is here for the proclamation wants to come up and stand up here as we read the proclamation and take some pictures.
All right, the order is a little. You guys hand it down. Yeah. Yeah. Let's just take this one.
Stand next to the bright stars.
Make sure you guys get some, yeah. We can get some more. All right. There you go. You can pass it up. All right. Well, do you want to? We'll just pass it over. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea.
What does Sam write here? No, no, come back here.
No, get in here. We have the wine.
Yes.
Should we just get that out of the way?
Yeah, let's just catch that.
You'll be leaning over the table here.
I know. All right, I think this is, we got a crowd here. All right, we're going to read the proclamation. Oh, I need my glasses. There's no way this is happening. All right. This is the Montgomery County Council proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, religion, and ethnic background have made extraordinary contributions to the growth and strength of Montgomery County, our nation, and the world in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and?
Whereas women have fought for and worked tirelessly to secure their own independence and franchisement and equal opportunities, and have spearheaded efforts to create a fairer and more equitable world for all, and?
Whereas, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress officially recognized March as Women's History Month in 1987 to celebrate the contributions women have made to the United States and their achievements throughout American history, and?
Whereas, while women have made great strides towards equity and equality, we cannot rest until all women can assume, assume their rightful place as full participants in a secure, prosperous, and just society, and?
Whereas archaic stereotypes about gender roles help perpetuate the gender pickup and undervalue the work of women, with women in the U.S. earning, earning about 71 cents on a dollar compared to their male counterparts, boo, at the same educational level. And women continue to be underrepresented in the highest-paying careers, and?
Whereas, despite these challenges, the accomplishments of women have been critical to the growth and development of the economy, medical and scientific discoveries, cultural and artistic expression, social advancement, and so much more, and?
Whereas Montgomery County has a rich history filled with women trailblazers. Some examples include Rachel Carson, the mother of the modern environmental movement, Clara Barton, founder of the American Red Cross, and Emily Edmondson, an abolitionist whose attempt to escape enslavement helped end slavery in the United States, and?
Whereas today, the 20th Montgomery County Council includes six women council members who are, that deserves a round of applause. Please note, I'm the only one that got a round of applause in the proclamation. Who are each making history of their own and together comprise a majority of the legislative body, and?
Whereas the theme for Women's History Month this year is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations in recognition of the collective strength and influence of women across our diverse county, and whereas Montgomery County strives to be a welcoming community for all women, thanks to strong support from our countless community leaders, government officials, nonprofit organization, and county agencies, and?
and county agencies, and...
Whereas during Women's History Month, we commemorate the struggles, celebrate centuries of progress, and reaffirm our steadfast commitment to women's rights in Montgomery County, the United States, and worldwide.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the County Council of Montgomery County, Maryland, recognizes March as Women's History Month. Thank you, everyone.